Okay. I hereby call this annual town meeting to order. I want to say welcome and thank you for coming. I'm Joe LaValle, your town moderator. Here we are again, and it seems like years go faster. I hope you all did -- I hope all you mothers had a really nice Mother's Day. It was really beautiful out, and we sure enjoyed it. This process of open town meeting is one of the oldest in the country. It's such a privilege to participate in, and my goal and my promise to you is to always do my best. At town meetings, I speak of communication and the lack of it in recent times. We continue to search for ways to reconnect and communicate. At town events, like the myriad of meetings or some issues that will and do affect each of us, whether through rules, laws, or taxes, how do we inform you and share ideas? It should be much less complicated. We're trying to, but it does seem elusive. Education and communication, not separation, is the goal. After all, we're a town with approximately 2,400 registered voters. There should be an easy way. If you go to YouTube and find Hatfield, there's some meetings that can help you. It'll help you keep up on the dates and the issues that affect us all. Check it out under Hatfield, and you'll see what's also there on Channel 15, but I myself find it much easier to watch it on YouTube because I can do it to my schedule. Always remember that change is a constant. However, when it happens slowly, we can adjust more easily so as not to make some mistakes that can easily affect so many. If done slowly and carefully, correcting as we go is much more gentle on us all. We see many places, agencies, and programs that just make a rapid change, and many of us say, "What were they thinking?" Well, sometimes holding off on an issue for more discussion or education can avoid huge regrets. So again, educate, don't separate. With that said, and I'll repeat it as people come in, if you're not a registered voter, you need to sit over near the bleachers or separate because when there's a reason to count, there's no confusion. The only people that can vote are registered voters. Unless you have some difficulty, just try to sit on the sidelines. After all, this is our gym, and it's an open meeting for registered voters to which to participate in this process, so thank you. Each year, I point out that we'll move along in a respectful manner due to reaching 10 o'clock. It's late for those with young children at home and our seniors. I'm being one of them. If we have a long way to go, we'll have to reconvene on another night to finish, and I know most of us here would rather not do that. As new town members remind me, it's easy for us to assume that we all know who's up here tonight. So I'm going to take a moment to introduce some people that do help our town operate. Just please raise your hand or stand if you're down below, if people can just catch the face. Board of Selectmen: Ed Jaworski, Diana Zinal, and Brian Moriarty. On the Finance Committee: Darryl Williams, Diane Brzezinski, Kim Baker, Sean Berry, and John Wilks. I don't think he's here tonight, but John Wilks just had his second baby, so congratulations, John, when you see this. I also wanted to say happy birthday to Diana because she's spending town meeting for her birthday. Town Administrator: Marlene Mashansky. Administrative Assistant: He's not here tonight, but you all talk to him sometimes. Gerard Bueno, and he helps out a whole lot. Executive Assistant: Karen Broder. Town Clerk: Lydia Zisch. Assistant Town Clerk: Elena Wilcox. School Superintendent: Michael Wood, over there. Michael's not a registered voter, but as school superintendent, I am allowing him to sit up front. He will not participate in any vote in case there's a question with school. DPW Director: Phil Genovese. Town Collector and Treasurer: Sharon Strugowski. Town Council: Tom Mullin. And the newer lady who's been our town accountant helping us through this maze of success, Lori Deloreo. Thank you for your help, and if I missed somebody, my apologies. Now, I do like to point out that a lot of careful consideration, time, and input has been spent on these articles presented tonight for your consideration, taken by some quite dedicated people during a lot of posted meetings all year up to tonight. These meetings serve to explain and discuss the details of ideas and issues and help each board craft a proposed article to present to townspeople as a whole their articles to either vote for or against tonight. With this said, I ask all here to be mindful of why we're here. Not to delve into such details that have already been discussed at length, but to consider whether we as a town approve or not each article as it's presented to the best of our abilities, with some discussion that helps explain a little bit more, or to raise some new information that came about since those meetings that are new to the article. This is out of respect for all of you that did attend the many meetings held during the year, yet not to be rude to anyone else. Now, I will say there's some that missed or didn't attend these meetings during the year and wish to try and rewrite or amend these articles here in their final form at the last minute. This is where much time will be consumed, and you need to be aware of this. At times, it's certainly welcome and necessary, while at others, a tactic resulting in either poor outcomes, as we've seen in recent years, or results in getting so complicated that common sense has returned us to the original article. And remember, these articles and motions took much of the year to craft and make workable for the town from many sides, but especially legal. In no way do we ever mean to show any disrespect to this process or to anyone, but rather to respect your time and patience. If we seem to be going off into specifics that have already been discussed, I will politely close off and go on to the next question. Otherwise, we'll be here for many more nights than any here will have the patience to sit through. I'm much tighter to the process and rule of law out of respect for all of you. I ask department heads and committees that if there are no inquiries, to please try to restrain from giving a very detailed explanation, as it's already been done. And this is in no way meant to be rude or condescending, but rather to allow the process to move forward if there are no questions to the article. Obviously, you did your homework, and you educated the townspeople during the year of your quite important article. As moderator for 20 years now, I thank you for your trust, and I hope to never let up on my commitment to all of you in this very special place called Hatfield. We love this town, all of us, so get involved and help keep it safe and protected. It's your town after all. You have concerns, departments have needs, and the Finance Committee has opinions, and the Board of Selectmen has a responsibility to try to explain or try to find common ground. So let's see what's possible tonight. We will use the consent agenda process to combine Articles 2 through 4, as these are the general articles that allow the town to basically operate and accept funds from the state, hold elections, and the treasurer to operate. Of course, any questions on any of them is just fine. So before I start on that, Diana had something to do here. Yes?
I'd like to make a presentation.
We didn't even start yet. No, she's making a presentation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Hi, Paul. It's Diana. How are you? So at the beginning of town meeting, there's always people we like to thank. One person we would like to thank is not able to join us tonight, but he's on the phone with me. It's Paul Labby. Paul, can I put you on speakerphone? Okay, everybody should be able to hear you now, so just be careful, okay? Paul, I'm very happy and very proud to let you know that this year's town report is dedicated to you.
Oh my God, that's great.
So I just want to read to you what's in the town report. It says, "Serving the community has been Paul's greatest contribution to Hatfield, not only volunteering for civic organizations, but also town government. Paul's involvement on the town's 350th Anniversary Steering Committee was unselfishly generous. He poured his ambition into many of the planned activities, particularly the parade commemorating the town's historic celebration. He has led and continues to lead the Memorial Day Parade as Parade Marshal for approximately 30 years. Paul served as past president and member of the Lions Club. For over 40 years, he has entertained us at Luminaryum as master of ceremony, and he continues this tradition. A member of the Planning Board, beginning in 2014, Paul did not seek reelection in 2019. Paul, thank you for your dedicated heart and soul serving our community." So we're sorry you couldn't be here tonight, but we did want to try to make you part of this really nice little ceremony. So I'm glad you could be on the phone, and I want to let you know that you will be getting an official visit in a few minutes with a delivery of one of the town reports. So Hatfield Police will be coming to your door. Don't think they're coming to get Kathy or anything, okay? Don't get nervous. So Paul, a million thanks and congratulations.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate it. And I want to remind you that my father was in the town report too, so it's kind of a nice deal. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Thank God for a little technology these days so we could include him in that. We also have a couple of other people that we'd really like to thank and acknowledge Okay, this one will be hard to get through. This is recognizing Stanley Semansky, who, like many people, I had a soft spot in my heart for. Stanley, known as Buster, is recognized for his generous love of Hatfield. He will be missed tremendously. Buster passed away in March of 2021. Buster's community devotion and willingness to help any way he could was such a big part of his spirit for life. He was the town's electrical inspector for over 30 years, in addition to serving on the Housing Authority for seven years. He was always willing, along with his great friend Lenny Von Flattern, to assist with commemorative events such as displaying the American flag on poles before the Memorial Day Parade and the Veterans Day Parade -- oh, excuse me, Veterans Day. Buster could be counted on. Buster was also involved with the Hatfield Fish and Game Club and supported the annual fishing derby for kids. Anyone who had the privilege to work with Buster or was fortunate to meet him and know him will never forget his friendly smile and jovial personality. So I'd like to present this to his wife, Jill. And Hatfield lost another great man this year as well. So we want to recognize Bob Bartlet. Bob made a life in Hatfield following his distinguished service in the U.S. Army. A member of the Hatfield American Legion, he volunteered to assist veterans, including at the Veterans Administration Medical Center in Leeds. Serving his community, Bob devoted 42 years to the Planning Board, 1974 to 2016, also representing Community -- excuse me, Capital Improvement Planning Committee and Center's Schools Site Assessment and Reuse Advisory Group. He was water superintendent between 1975 and 1976. Following his retirement from Hampshire Construction Company and Hatfield Equipment that he owned and operated with his wife Joan, they could be seen enjoying more time driving around in his red Corvette. Forever grateful to Bob for his aspiration to volunteer, we recognize his loss in October of 2021, and we'd like to present this to his son, Michael, who's here tonight. Oh, great. And Max. Oh, and Susan. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were all there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and thank you. We'll look at you more. Okay. Thank you. Carrie, thank you, Bob.
If you're not a registered voter, you need to sit up on the sides when it's time, if there's a count to be done. I just want to remind some of the last people that came back in. So this is only for registered voters to be able to take action. Thank you. Carrie?
Are we done with announcements? If I can make a motion, possibly, before we start?
Okay, what would it be?
I'd like to make a motion that we take up Article 29 out of order and discuss before we discuss any other articles.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, can you explain?
My reasoning for taking up Article 29 is that this discussion, as everyone here tonight probably knows, will be a lengthy discussion, and many people would like to get a lengthy discussion done, I feel, early than later. And being near the end of the agenda or the warrant list, I just would think that we would want to take this up now instead of taking it up later when people are exhausted.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, so do you want to?
29, right?
Is that 29? Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 29.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Excuse me. Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 29 as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $750,000 for the relocation of the sewer lift station from easements previously acquired at Number 32 West Street, Number 34 West Street, to a proposed location on town-owned land at Parcel 219 on Assessor's Map 85-0 near Number 46 West Street and the access road to the town cemetery. To transfer the purpose of the said land to sewer use and to raise this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow on General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, and any other enabling authority. And to authorize the Select Board to apply for state and/or federal grants and aid of the said project and to expand the proceeds thereof without further appropriation.
Second.
You've heard the motion and seconded on it. Any discussion?
Carrie Flaherty, 10 Promrose Path. I have to voice my concern about this. I know later on, we have some other petitioned articles, but in the case of this, I don't see why our town is going to spend any additional money for a project that we have discussed twice in lengthy conversation in town meetings where everybody attended, everybody listened, we discussed it, and it was voted on, and the project is already in place. I think it is absolutely insane that as taxpayers, we are going to want to spend any more of our money for a project that was developed and figured out and done, which is going to give sewer to many more residents and businesses on Route 5. And it just, it makes no sense to me that we're going to even think about possibly having to spend additional monies and delay the project that's already been put in place, and we've been dealing with this already. It's time to just move the project on like we should be and continue on our way for it to be completed so businesses and homes can, you know, have what has been dedicated to them for a project in the town and not delay it any further.
Okay, thank you. May I? And when you come up to the mic, just say your name and the street you live on. You don't have to do your house number, just the street.
What's your name?
Carrie Flaherty.
Carrie Flaherty, thank you. My name's Susan Berry, and the amount of $750,000 is very erroneous. I've asked in the past, the town throws out money, you know, and I've asked for documentation on where they come up with $750,000, or even, you know, they just throw out figures. And when I ask for documentation, I never get it. So where, if you're just throwing out $750,000 to scare everyone, then show me the documentation for it, because we have come up with a lot less. And I just want to, since we're going out of order. In the lawsuit in December, the town said it would cost $400,000 more. Now they're saying $750,000 more, and that was under oath. We disagreed with that small figure of $400,000. It makes no sense that it's now $750,000 when they swore under oath that it was $400,000 in December. They seem to be throwing out unsubstantiated numbers to scare people.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd like to ask our engineer, Michael Oll, to speak to the number. Are you able to do that, Michael?
Mic's in the back.
Oh, mic's in the back, I'm sorry.
Michael Oll is the engineer involved with the design.
And Brian, before he speaks, I just need to get your permission for a non-voter to come to address the town and speak. Is all in favor of him speaking?
Aye.
Any opposed? He can speak. Thank you. This is your meeting, and I'm just making sure.
Mike, why don't you introduce yourself? Because I didn't.
Certainly. My name is Michael Oll.
Michael, why don't you tip the mic up a little?
Yep, my name is Michael Oll. I'm engineer in principle at a firm comprehensive environmental engineering.
Thank you.
So to speak to the cost of the $750,000. At this point in time, the project has started. People will have noticed.
Can everybody hear, or does he need to speak louder?
A little louder.
Speak louder?
Okay.
Please.
So at this point in time, the sewer project has been started, and a fair amount of work was completed last year. And a portion of that includes the gravity sewer that would be right in front of
You speak louder.
That would be right in front of the diner heading north. Right now, the design has everything set up so that the sewage flows north to south and ends up at the pump station, which is currently sited on the easements that the town approved previously. To date, the contractor has put in roughly a little over $180,000 worth of work on that stretch of gravity sewer that would not be reusable if the sewer pump station or lift station was shifted to the cemetery site, because the sewer for that section would need to go in a northerly direction to end up at that cemetery site. So essentially, that portion of the project, the $180,000 plus or minus, would be essentially abandoned in place. There is roughly $135,000 for extending, for replacing that section, going in the other direction, and the additional $386,000, probably $387,000, essentially to extend a force main from the cemetery site to the current location of the pump station or lift station. That number is sizable because at present, the southbound lane of West Street in that area has a water main close to the center line, the new sewer, the gravity sewer that, whether it's going north or south flow-wise, it will still be in that location. And then it also has some drain pipes on pretty much the edge of the road. So the only available spot really to put the force main in that section would be on the northbound lane. And a requirement, if we touch the pavement in that area, Mastioti, who is the owner of that road, will require us to pave the full lane. So a sizable portion of that cost is actually because of having to do a new full-width pavement from the cemetery down to the stream crossing. So that's the magnitude of the cost. And those costs were based on unit prices that the contractor submitted through the public bidding process in a competitive bid environment. So it is what it is.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. So just so people are clear, the
Can everybody talk louder, because there's a lot of people in this room?
Sure. I usually don't have a problem with that. Thank you. So just to be clear, it's been called a pump station, a raw sewage station, a lift station, when in fact, could you just explain exactly what would be on the property, the depth that it will be on the property, and what actually would be above the property? Because I think people need to have, to be able to have a vision. This is nowhere near like the one near my house, which, for you old-timers, is Mrs. Furch's house. So the pump station near my home is older, it's larger than the proposed station on Route 5. Would you say that, is that correct?
That is correct. What I would compare this proposed pump station or lift station with is the existing sewer lift station on King Street at the intersection with North Street. And you probably don't even notice it. What it consists of, when you look at it, is it's a concrete structure. It's called a wet well. There are pumps that are suspended in that wet well. That wet well structure is roughly 20 by 8 feet in area, and it'll be 20 feet deep. And it will all be below grade. What you'll see at the surface is a flat exposed concrete pad. And adjacent to it will be the actual control valves for those pumps in a smaller pit that'll be roughly 8 feet square, 8 by 8, and only about 8 or 10 feet deep. Again, that'll just be, look like a exposed concrete pad from the surface. The most visible part of the structure at the surface is an electrical control panel. You probably have seen cabinets of that nature around town. It's at the sewer lift station on King Street at North Street. It's about 6, 7 feet tall. It'll be 6, 7 feet wide. And based on previous comments, all these structures have been shifted in a southerly direction so that they all fall right now on the property immediately adjacent to the stream, not the diner property. And the control panel and the other above-grade structure is a odor control treatment device, which literally is essentially a charcoal filter, very small. That has all been tucked towards the back, away from the road as far as possible. So it should be, it will provide minimal visible obstruction, or I suspect people won't even notice it.
And we have nine others in town, do we not? Nine other of these types of services?
Yes.
It's nine others in Hatfield already?
Yes.
And I bet nobody here could know where all nine of them are, except Phil. Okay. Again, this is just for clarification for folks that might not have been watching the meetings that have been ongoing for the last number of years. When I was doing this research, this project started in 2014 when I was newly elected to the Select Board, and Jeff Boyle and Ed Lesko were on the Select Board. Here we are eight years later. At the time, we were asking for Senator Rosenberg and Representative CoCot's assistance in getting this $2 million grant. Ultimately, I was able to receive the grant as the chairman of the board in 2019, as the chairman, when we, it was Ed, Diana, and I, Senator Commerford, and Representative Sabodso were there, and we received a check for $2 million from Secretary Caneely. So this has been a long, arduous, time-consuming process. So this has been a long, arduous, time-consuming process, but well worth it in time to keep moving and get this project over with. I would also add that the grant of $2 million, we're on a timeline for that, to make sure that we don't have to go back to the state and explain to them why there was a delay that we didn't meet the June 30th of this year, expending of their funds. There's already a conference call lined up, should we need it, to have this explanation with the deputy secretary for that department. So, you know, again, I just want to make sure everybody is clear that we followed all the rules, all the legal aspects of this. Land and property was appraised, it was paid for, you know, or I should say was purchased. We've done everything by the book, and as Mrs. Flaherty said, this is the third go at it. And I don't know how many times we're going to keep having a town meeting about the same thing. Thank you.
I would just like to add to that, that, to reiterate, that two previous town meetings have already found in favor of this project. It's really an important project from a resident standpoint and an economic development standpoint. And I want to point out that at the end of this, the residents there and the businesses there will be on town sewer, which is a huge benefit to all of them, including Ms. Berry's property. So I just, I mean, it's obvious, but I think it's worth just clearly stating that this is being done, was, this project was born from, and is being carried through with the best of intentions for all of the people that own property out in that area.
Okay. And this lady right here had a question.
Hi, Sean Selby of 59 King Street. Actually, I had a question for this gentleman. May I ask him a question?
Sure.
Great.
Well, you can ask the question, and then he'll come over and answer.
Perfect, okay. So, with all due respect, there wasn't a new restaurant on the property when you were starting the process? A restaurant owned by Hatfield residents who are extremely generous to the community and extremely hardworking. And I just, I really, really appreciate the opportunity to kind of visualize what this is going to look like. I think that was extremely helpful. But I was just wondering, in terms of the actual, like, visual landscape, oftentimes there's outdoor seating at this restaurant, and maybe you could elaborate, sort of aesthetically, what the sewer pump would look like from the restaurant? Because I get the sense of what it would look like, but I don't really get the sense of where it would be. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you. Good.
If you were at the restaurant, you, and looking over towards the sewer lift station, the most noticeable thing would be what they refer to as bollards, which are essentially, you know, 6-inch diameter pipes sticking up out of the ground roughly 3 feet, essentially to keep vehicles from driving on top of the sewer lift station. Other than that, you probably wouldn't notice the control cabinet, because it's been tucked in the back as far away from the road as possible, up against the trees, the cluster of trees on the property line there. And that's it.
So you're saying just a barrier pipe, so if somebody backed up, they would hit the pipe, not the unit?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Sure?
I would like to make a...
Up, you get to come to the mic.
I was really polite earlier. I sat down, I was already asking for a motion, and I was very polite.
We didn't even start the articles at that point. You know, I apologize, but we didn't start the articles at that point.
Well, you said Article 2 to 4, so I thought you were lumping them together, and...
We've been following parliament, we've been following the parliamentary...
I'm new to this, okay? Bear with me.
Thank you. I move to allow three non-citizens to speak at this meeting. One, my engineer, who will be able to fill in our, you know, design. And the other two will speak later for the other articles. One is Bucky Sparkle, my engineer, to speak about the engineering aspects, including the related costs of the articles. The citizens should hear both sides of the story, because there may be disagreement about certain issues, and the citizens will have to decide what to do. And Attorney McGlaughlin, my lawyer, to speak, as he can better explain what petition articles are about. Additionally, he can talk about how the related lawsuit pertains to the articles. The citizens should hear both sides of the arguments related to the lawsuit. Mr. Lou Ruthier and Dennis Ruthier, who has the property at 32 West Street, should be allowed to speak. This property is going to be severely affected by the current planned easements. The Ruthiers do not live in Hatfield, but have run their business here for 37 years. When it comes to an eminent domain taking, the owner of the property should clearly be allowed to talk about the taking of their property. So I move to allow three non-citizens to speak at this meeting.
Well, that's, we're talking on this article at this moment. When we get to those, we would bring those up.
All right, then I move to have my engineer speak on this article.
All I need is to ask their permission for, what's his name?
Bucky Sparkle.
Bucky Sparkles to speak on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. He's allowed to speak.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's true. My name is Bucky Sparkle. I'm a civil engineer. I've been doing this for two and a half decades, a lot of municipal infrastructure. And I have been involved in this project as Ms. Berry's engineer, as a consultant, to see how this impacts her property and the property of the Ruthiers next door. And I definitely had a few things prepared, but things are out of order tonight, so it's going to be a little more extemporaneous. It is true that relocating the pump station to the cemetery site is going to cost more money, it's a longer force main. It is true that the town has installed a degree of sanitary sewer gravity pipe in front of Ms. Berry's property at the southern end of the project. My understanding is that gravity sewer was installed at a degree of risk, because the town was aware that the pump station was being contested, it might end up somewhere else. So there was roughly a...
Can you talk into the microphone?
Yes, sure. Thank you. Where roughly, you know, my opinion is the town made a $100,000 gamble with taxpayer money that now comes back into play in tonight's discussion. And, you know, we just heard from Michael Oll, the town's civil engineer, he does what I do. He's clearly no fool, I seem to respect him. But I really do have to wonder how his sworn testimony of $400,000, which was an estimate based on the contractor, the contract, the unit price, how that has inflated now to roughly double that. And back when it was $400,000, we pointed out a very significant error in that, because it was the contractor who provided the unit price estimate. The contractor said it was going to be about $400,000. But he included an extra 700 feet of pipe in that, which was well over a $100,000 error even in that number. So the original numbers didn't make sense, they didn't match the contract, the contractor sure didn't think it was going to cost $750,000. So it's really amazing to me that this number has suddenly materialized during this political So, you know, based on the contract prices and the information available to me, and based on what the contractor said, we have roughly $200,000 additional cost enforcement, it's a longer pipe, further to pump, absolutely, as well as replacing a portion of the work that was installed, although it's certainly not $180,000 worth. So potentially, it is truly, $300,000 maybe less to relocate that pump station, and I'm happy to talk more in detail, this is not the venue for that. So, you know, I do, I do want to mention that, you know, there is a value to property owner rights and business rights and the eminent domain taking to put a sanitary sewer pump station in front of a restaurant that the site has been a restaurant, I believe, for almost 70 years. It's like the worst place you could put a pump station. And there are a whole bunch of other alternatives. The town has not really considered any of them, taken any of them seriously since we began this process last year. Yes, this is the third time at a town meeting, but we've made quite an effort to come up with other alternatives, which Ms. Berry has paid for designs and analysis to say, hey, look, there are a lot of other opportunities than putting it in the front yard of a business or the front yard of neighbors across the street. And Ms. Berry is adamant that the municipal infrastructure should sit on publicly-owned property and not be yanked off of the property of successful business owners who are, you know, doing their best to get through the world and serve the community in their own ways. So I do appreciate the time, and I'm happy to answer any other questions if members of the town are interested. Thank you.
Steph Slush, you had a question?
Hi, Stephanie Slush, Straits Road. I feel like we might be getting a little ahead of ourselves here. I'm curious if we can, if I can ask why the finance committee recommended this, and why the Department of Public Works and Select Board put this article in here, and how it relates to Articles 30, 31, and 32.
Daryl, you got to get closer to the mic.
Can everyone hear me? No.
There you go.
Is that better? Sorry. The finance committee, yes, it's true, it says recommended by the finance committee on this, but if the petition articles pass, we need this to pass so that we can continue with the project. We, the state has brought, has given us roughly $2 million. We've borrowed money, we're not, you know, we're not going to stop the proj, we do not feel it's in the town's best interest to stop the project at this, at this point. But if you vote it down now, and the petition articles are voted down, the project goes on. If the petition articles are voted in favor, we would have to come back to this article.
Thank you for explaining that. I think then it might make sense to have Article 29 vote on after we vote on 30, 31, and 32?
We're already on this article.
But we're already in it, okay.
Okay. Just a minute, there's some hands, there's some hands. You've had some time, just a minute.
Hello, everybody. My name's Scott Faniff. I'd like to hear what the owner of the property is, complaints or what they are. Get him up here and find out what his concerns are.
She's the owner.
She's the owner of the property.
Lou Ruthier?
Oh, the others.
Okay.
I would like to have the owners of the property speak.
In historically, I've had people that have had businesses, and we have this on other businesses that have wanted to come and speak at town meeting, and that's the tragedy of people not being registered voters. This is the people's, this is the people's time, okay? And I know the selectmen have had many people as well ask, and this is the people's time. We let engineers talk to explain something. There's been some attorneys talk to clarify a specific thing. Because what starts to happen is, is if everybody has their attorney come and talk for them, then in a few years, every one of us in this room with an issue is going to have our attorney, and that's what courts are for.
All right, then, I'll just add to this. The reason why you had a delay in even finishing the project is you put in a new water line, where the engineer, the contractor had to install a water line. And that, they didn't really start until September, any kind of work, on the second phase of the, on the second phase of the sewer station, the, you know, I got to take a breath, excuse me. I know the town can get money, funding. The town has gone through the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan. All across the country, they're trying to get these sewage pump stations away from water. And this is an opportunity for the town to realize, this could turn into a disaster. It's only 70 feet from the brook, it's not just...
Okay, we're, that's up to the Conservation Commission and all, we're here to deal with Article 29 on this. So you're getting outside the box of the article.
Okay, the funding can come from the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. It's from the resiliency part of it. So they could get funding from there. And back, it was back on May 28, 2021, Mr. Oll stated, one of the potential options for addressing my unforeseen expenses, which this would fall in to a category, is to take it from the town's expected ARPA money. Or, you could also get the money from, it falls in same, the project will be under construction in the year 2022, so it would appear to align with the federal stimulus fund schedule. And that was from Mr. Oll back on that date that I just gave. There's also, you could have a cost change order, and from the Municipal Vulnerability Plan, they have implementation grants from Massachusetts Executive Office.
Okay, okay, but all these funding sources cannot be decided here tonight. Those are things, those are things that you would bring to the finance committee if they have to go out and find the funding for it.
Well, that's what I'm trying to let the people know, it's not just a, please, the town's got to come up with the money.
I just want to remind you that none of those would be guaranteed, nor would they probably fit within the timeframe that we need to work with the Mass Works grant.
Well, the timeframe can definitely be increased, especially by using the monies and the time to install the water line.
Okay. Carrie? Nancy, let me, let me switch it around a little bit. Nancy, you had your hand up before, and I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Hi, Nancy Shay, Main Street. I would just like to understand this a little bit better, because I'm really getting confused. I tried to read up on this and understand, a lot of numbers thrown around. When it came down to it, I did some math to see how much I was going to have to pay for this, 800, $750,000. What I don't understand, and I do, I'm supposed to talk to her, but there seems to be some very hot tempers, and I'm afraid we're going in that direction. We're an hour into this meeting, and we are nowhere. There's several other people who wish to speak, that we could be here all night. What I would like to know is, what is the burning issue? Why is this so bad to have near a business? Because we hear one thing, that it's below ground. I don't even think the pumping stations that are 35 years old are horrible. They're not wonderful, but they're not horrible. So could she please explain to us what is, why this has become such a powerful issue, and why we should feel badly about this and agree?
Well, it's near a river. They're talking about the municipal vulnerability aspect of it and the resiliency plan. Why wait till we have a flood?
Okay, those, those, excuse me, those are for Conservation Commission. We have a Conservation Commission, and if anything is going to put our... We have a Conservation Commission, and if anything is going to put our environment at risk, it goes to them, and they say yes or no.
If this preparedness plan helps prevent it.
But we're not going to settle that here tonight. We have a whole lot of stuff to go through.
Well, you know what? It's not my fault.
It's, it's not their fault either. I'm sorry.
We talked, we talked with the town prior to them even advertising the Phase Two part of this construction.
Okay.
It was way before that.
So this is not an entire town meeting for this issue, and I apologize for you.
Well, I'm sorry, but it's not going to be solved.
Okay, but there's other things to go through. So Mickey, if you have something to say, I'm trying to get other opinions.
I do want to say one other thing. I'm in support of voting for this article.
Okay.
Can I speak to what Nancy asked?
Sure.
Again, just to reiterate, so the, there are homes out there that have had problems with septic systems. The benefit is that they'll be on sewer now. And I know that, I keep saying this, and it seems so obvious, but it's really important that these homes and businesses even, who've had septic problems on the property, will get to connect now.
Okay, so we got to get moving here. Mickey, go ahead.
Very quickly, Mickey Sanderson, 3 Maple Street. Threfold. We need sewer on 5 and 10. We need commercial real estate on 5 and 10. It's going to bolster our economy as a town. We've committed to it, and I see it as a boon for all taxpayers. To be true, eminent domain is not happy. Just ask all the people up along the sides of, you know, Route 91 in 1965. However, it is progress, is the way a town moves forward, and I believe that, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Elizabeth?
And I would add that I am a licensed real estate agent in residential and commercial property.
Okay. Ma'am, wait, there was, there was a motion to call the question and a second. But there was a motion, she made the motion to call the question, and there was a second. That's parliamentary law, so we have to get people's permission. Do we vote in favor to call the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The question is called. All of those in favor of Article 29, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay. Do it one more time, I've done this before. All those in favor of Article 29, this got to be a two-thirds vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
I call it as a nay. So the motion...
I ask for an actual vote.
We can do a standing vote, all right? I'm not going to get into the others. We can do, we're in a very clear-cut place. Now, I have Bobby Betzel and Brian Nicholas, two most trusted people that are going to do a count. All those in favor, please stand in favor of this article. And if you're a non-voter, please, you cannot participate. Non-registered voter.
The bleachers are out.
Okay, he's done the front, he's done, yep, he's done the front. Okay, now, all those opposed to Article 29, please stand. This is way easier than at the pavilion, so thank you for your patience. Brian, I'm glad you made it back from Florida, just in time. Okay, so the motion fails. If you want to hear the numbers, Lydia can certainly read them off. Why don't you do that?
The ayes were 53 and the nays were 99.
Okay, so now if we can go back to the consent agenda articles from the beginning.
Okay, start at the beginning.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Seinal.
I move, we take up Articles 2 through 4.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 2 through 4 in your handouts. These are the general ones that just allow us to exist as a town.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Seinal.
I move the town vote to approve Article 2 to authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend without appropriation any state or federal grants, gifts, and awards from any public or private source that became, become available in fiscal year 2023. Approve Article 3 to authorize its treasurer, subject to the approval of the Select Board, to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2023 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the General Laws. Appropriate under Article 4 the sum of $240,475 for the town's transportation bond issue apportionment, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Massachusetts Department of Public Works pursuant to General Law, Chapter 90.
Second.
You've heard Articles 2 through 4, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Our motions carry.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 6.
Aye.
Five.
Article 5, Article 5.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 5, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,055 for prior year expenses for various boards and departments, and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
You've heard the motions made in Article 5, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty. I always, I always think of Sherlock Holmes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I've been called worse, trust me. I move the town take up Article 6.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 6, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $131,344 to supplement the fiscal year 2022 snow and ice budget for unforeseen expenses, and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
You've heard the motion made in Article 6, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Seinal.
I move we take up Article 7.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 7, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Seinal.
I move the town vote to establish a five-member Celebration Committee to oversee town-related public celebrations, including planning for future town anniversary celebrations, and authorize the Select Board to appoint said committee, provided that two members shall initially be appointed for a one-year term, two members for two years, and one member for three years, and that as each member's term expires, his or her successor, successors shall be appointed for a three-year term.
Second.
You've heard the Articles, motion in Article 7, any discussion?
Forgive me for not following how this came to be, but my question is, why wouldn't this, isn't this sort of redundant to our local cultural council, which handles things like events and other celebrations? When I was on the council, we did, we got, had many concerts, performances, et cetera, and there's already a system in place for it. Two, you get state grant money as well. So maybe whoever originated this could explain why the local cultural council might be the better choice, or not, why it's not a good choice.
And can you state your name and the street you live on?
Oh, I'm sorry, Christopher Smith, Prospect Street.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I think Bobby's coming.
Hi, James Starr, Prospect Street. I was wondering, who are the appointed people going to be? Are they townspeople? Are they town officials? This is very nebulous about the selectmen appointing people to this board. And so just trying to get an idea of what you're talking about when, who we're talking about appointing.
Okay. And Bob, did you want to talk on that?
That would be, like, boards, all boards and committees, it will be comprised of
Bobby Betzel, Pantry Road, also a member of the 350th Anniversary Committee. So this was submitted by the 350th Anniversary Committee. This is actually a follow-on to that committee, and part of what has come of that is twofold. One, is that in the past, when we've had these anniversaries, it's been a new committee that's been appointed each 20 years or so to get into that part of it. And then the follow-on has been the funding portion of it, which historically has not been much funding that's been left over. This year, we're, this celebration, we are fortunate to have a fair amount of funding left over, and additionally, we had numerous events and activities that were created by this committee, by the 350th Committee, and are looking to continue, for example, the park concert series, hopefully trying to continue with fireworks at Luminarium, and other types of fundraising activities. The cultural council functions strictly with the funds from the state side and doesn't actually do the planning. They just provide the funding for groups that will apply for the funds. So this group's actually going to do all the logistics, the planning, continuation of that. Also, as Diana mentioned, this would be, these individuals would be appointed like any other board or committee through the Select Board. So the, the plan would be for it to be town residents, and then go from there.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 8.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 8, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to create a revolving fund to take effect commencing July 1, 2022, to be administered by the Celebration Committee for the purpose of supporting the town's celebration events, to be funded by revenues generated by such events, with an initial spending limit in fiscal year 2023 of $50,000, and to amend Article 16 of the general bylaws entitled Department Revolving Funds by adding the following to the ending of the table of revolving funds.
Or take any action there, okay. Okay, you've heard Article 8, the motion for Article 8, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Boy, I'd have to say, I wish I had this when I was in school, I'd be on this committee in a minute, because it sounds like they're going to have some fun times for the town. So congratulations on what you guys have done with the 350th. I just had to say that, after the article. Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 9.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 9, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to close out the account created under Article 10 of the warrant for the special town meeting of June 27, 2018, for the 350th anniversary, and to appropriate by transfer the outstanding balance thereof as follows. A, the sum of $10,000 to free cash, and B, the sum of $55,278.98 to be used by the Celebration Committee to fund town-related public celebrations.
You've heard the motion in Article 9, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Seinal.
I move we take up Article 10.
Second.
Okay, we're going to take up Article 10 in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Seinal.
I move that the town vote to transfer to free cash the balance of funds appropriated for the following purposes under the following articles from prior town meetings. A, the sum of $90 for a software upgrade for the assessors under Article 28 of the 2009 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. B, the sum of $90,621.85 for the center school demolition under Article 23 of the 200, excuse me, 2015 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. C, the sum of $8,350.94 for the highway garage roof under Article 18 of the 2013 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. D, the sum of $2,983.39 for water service repairs on Valley and South Streets under Article 20 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. E, the sum of $136.48 for the master plan, wastewater system maintenance and expansion under Article 18 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. And F, the sum of $1,178.72 for Water Main Extension on Straits Road under Article 12 of the warrant for the special town meeting of June 2019.
Second.
You've heard the motions read under Article 10, is there any discussion? Mike?
Mike Cahill, North Street. So now that these have, excuse me, when we vote on this, and if we vote positively, will these numbers add to our free cash balance, and can it be used at this meeting?
And, and, Mike, 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 you got to say that louder.
Say that what, louder?
Couldn't hear you.
If, if we vote, if we vote all of these tonight positively, and it all goes into free cash, will that add to our free cash balance tonight, and will we be able to use that money in tonight's meeting?
No. We, it will fall to the 2023, it will fall to free cash after, perhaps, if I got it right, Lori, this fall, when we, when we, it'll be available, but it won't be available until then.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 11.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 11, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $5,141.51 to the ambulance surplus fund from the balance of funds appropriated for the ambulance electronic patient reporting service system under Article 21 of the 2011 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
You've heard the motion made in Article 11, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 12.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 12, is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $56,332.92 for the purpose of renovating the town hall second floor bathroom, to include meeting handicapped accessibility codes, and to meet said appropriation by transferring from the unexpended proceeds of a loan which was authorized under Article 2 of the warrant for the special town meeting of October 2016.
You've heard the motion read under Article 12, is there any discussion?
Quick question. Are there other unexpended proceeds that were voted under that warrant, the special town meeting of October 2016? In other words, are we using all of our balance?
Yeah, I understand the question. Yep. I don't know the answer to that. There are more?
No.
No, we're using it all. We're using it all, Mike.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 12 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Seinal. Mrs. Seinal.
I move we take up Article 13.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 13 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Seinal.
I move the town vote to rescind the motion passed under Article 14 of the 2021 annual town meeting warrant, authorizing the borrowing of $255,000 to fund the purchasing of communications equipment for the fire and police departments.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Yes.
I'm like, Article 30, 31, 32, after order?
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to take up, let me look at those numbers. 30, 31, and 32 citizens' petitions.
Don't you have to ask for a second?
Yeah, I, I do. But we have to have a discussion, correct? Tom? Is there a discussion on it?
It's a motion, so.
Yeah, so is there any, is there any discussion on this before we vote on it? Hmm?
Yeah, I suppose that's true.
My name's Susan Berry. Aren't we just voting out? I'm a retired civilian engineer for the state of Massachusetts. I own 34, 36 West Street where the Waxwing Cafe is. The Waxwing is truly a benefit to our town and something Hatfield can be proud of. Unfortunately, the Select Board has taken an easement on the Waxwing property and on the Ruderson and Roofdears Engineering Business property next door at 32 West Street. They intend to construct a raw sewage lift pump station on our properties, which would have horrible consequences for our small businesses. I started a petition to put three articles on this year's warrant so that citizens-
Ms., Ms. Berry, this is just some discussion on, we have to vote on taking it out of order. I'm just looking for, so, it's, it's, it's made and seconded, and is there any discussion on taking it out of order?
Oh, I see.
So you're not presenting yet? This is only about taking-
I flunked, I guess I flunked tonight.
That's okay.
I'm new.
That's, that's okay. So you can have a seat for a minute.
Okay.
And, and, and is there any other discussion on taking these three out of order? Does anybody have an opinion on that? Okay. All those in favor of taking them out of order and taking them up now signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
I say the ayes carry, so now you can come back up. Just following procedure.
Can I start where I left off?
Sure.
Okay. All right. I started a petition to put three articles on this year's warrant so that citizens can vote to stop to select, stop the Select Board from doing this. This whole situation is complicated, but let me start by saying, we need you to vote in favor of Article 30, the article that is before us right now. I also need you to vote in favor-
Ms., Ms., I, I, again, everything here is legal, and I have to be careful. You have to get your motion, you have to state your motion. And you need a copy of that?
No.
Okay. So can you read your motion about moving the article up one more time?
One article.
So you want me to read the article?
Just tell me what your motion, is that what it is, Tom?
Or just read it as, as printed?
Read the motion.
Okay, you want me to read it? All righty.
Hmm? Wait.
On each one?
Just a minute. She's gotta read all three petitions, right?
Right.
Okay.
One at a time, okay.
Like we do.
So the way you gotta follow this, are you listening, Ms. Berry? The way the law is, and I didn't make the law, you have to take, and you wanna do all three of them, so you have to take Article 30 and read your, your petition.
Okay. Article 30.
And believe me, with all this, with all this stuff videoed now, the Attorney General's office can look at it and nail us to the wall, so I apologize.
To see if the town will vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 40 S 15A to authorize a new use of the northern portion of parcel of land owned by the inhabitants of the town of Hatfield, located on the eastern side of West Street adjacent to and to the rear of 46 West Street, and a new or additional use of the related easement running between the land and West Street, all as described in the deed dated October 13, 1959, and recorded in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds and Book 1316 at page 331. The current use being that the vacant land adjacent to land being used for cemetery purposes, with the proposed new use being the location for the installation and maintenance of pump stations, forced mains, manholes, pipes, conduits, and/or related improvements as may be necessary in connection with the Route 5 Water and Sewer Infrastructure Improvements Project, to allow the project to go forward without any imminent domain-taking from a private property owner or take any other action relative thereto. Do we need any more motions? That was written by a lawyer, by the way.
That's okay. So we're gonna talk on this one here, is that correct? Or does she need to read all three? Okay, is there a second on her reading of the motion? Okay, over there. Okay. Now you can continue on, and I sincerely apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
Yep.
I'm still reading. No, you hold on.
No, point, point of order means everything stops for a minute.
Oh, I didn't hear him say that.
Point of order. We're taking three articles at the same time without discussing any of them?
No, we're gonna have to do one at a time. And then-
She's making it-
Okay, so part of my error was, we voted on one, so when we finish this one, we'll have to vote to take up Article 31 and vote that again. So we're on Article 30 at the moment.
So there, there needs to be a second to her motion?
Yes, the lady in the back did give a second.
Okay, so this is a discussion now of that-
On Article 30.
Okay. All right.
You're, you're well seasoned, I'm not.
No.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna start with this. This whole situation is complicated, but let me start by saying, we need you to vote in favor of Article 30, the article that is before us right now. I also need you to vote in favor of Article 31 and 32, which are related to Article 30. Last year, citizens voted against putting the raw sewage pumping station on the business properties, but when the votes of the Select Board were included, which is legal, we allegedly lost both votes by one vote. I want to thank all of the non-political voting citizens who voted for us last year. We really appreciated your votes. If it were up to, to just us and not the politicians, this would have been over last year. I'm not gonna dwell on what happened in the past, I wanna move forward, and we could, we could fix this. We could make it better for people who are running businesses. There's no need to take our property when you have another alternative. And those figures are very much inflated. Article 30 involves locating the raw sewage lift station on the town-owned property. The property near the cemetery is not by deed limited to cemetery use, and it's owned by the citizens. I have letters from multiple people who have ancestors buried in West Street Cemetery, or who have plots there who support this effort. Do you remember Margie Kowalski? Her brother built the restaurant 69 years ago. She has written, she's 103, she may be the oldest living person in the town. She has written in support of putting the raw sewage pump station at the cemetery. She thinks it's a good idea, it's a very bad idea to put the pump station near the restaurant and the river. We will be submitting these to the town, and these meaning the support of putting this at the Roth, at the cemetery. We will be submitting these to the town and the Cemetery Commission in support of putting the lift station at the cemetery location. Please vote to help protect our small business properties. There is no need to seriously hurt the small business properties when there is a viable alternative. You can vote to put the, you can vote to put this pump station on vacant land you already own with easement and water line already there. It's a win-win. It's a win for the town and a win for the two small businesses that are gonna be damaged. As earlier, my engineer explained the costs, and it's nowhere near the numbers that were being thrown out by the Select Board. The benefits of putting the lift station on the town property, which is about 500 feet north of the restaurant, is by placing lift station on this property, no property owner, residential or commercial, will have their property tainted with the stigma of having the sewage pump station on the property. That's a win-win. Environmentally, this is a better location. The proposed location on the commercial property is within 100 feet of the buffer zone of With the, which is, it's based on outdated modalities. In this world of climate change, it is extremely unreasonable to place the raw sewage pump station so close to the banks of a substantial brook.
Okay, okay, Ms. Berry, again, that's up to the Conservation Commission.
The town has been, when we get a serious flood, this will be somewhat catastrophic. The town has been accepted by the Municipal Vulnerability Program and can qualify for grants with, with the program. There might be grants available to the town which could help compensate for the costs associated with moving the pump station to a more environmentally friendly location, away from the river. Another win-win. In preparation for climate resiliency, which is preparing for areas subject to disaster like one, A, Zodding.
Okay, Ms., Ms., Ms. Berry, we usually give people two minutes, maybe three, you're going, can you sum it up quick?
Okay. By placing the pump station on land near the cemetery, I will lose my claim for diminution in value, my restaurant property, from the stigma and real problems created by locating the raw sewage lift pumping station. Also, 32 West Street will lose the claim they have because the fixtures for the pump station are now supposed to be located right in front of their yard, near where trucks have drive-in every day.
Okay.
Please, okay, please vote for Article 30, 2, 30, which authorizes the Select Board to use the vacant property already owned by the citizens.
Okay, I'm gonna give somebody else a chance to do some talking. I mean, you can't tie up the whole night here.
Okay, please, please stay and vote for all three articles.
Thank you. Mickey? By the way, is Jonathan Bardwell here tonight? Okay. In a minute. Oh, it's, now I see your hand.
Yeah. Hi, Mickey Sanderson, 3 Maple Street. First of all, town land is very important, and I don't necessarily think we should take away town lands for cemetery use. I don't think that's, I think that's important, not to take that away. The second point would be, is that there are multiple municipalities, city and town, that have taken lands for the betterment of the communities. All you have to do is look at North Hampton. I have to say, for everybody to be on a sewer, on 5 and 10, is only beneficial, it's only beneficial. And if we could promise that to all of Hatfield, wouldn't that be wonderful? So again, I'd like to move the question, Moderator, to-
Mickey, I'm just, if you can hold that just for one second, I want Jonathan Bardwell, who's on the Cemetery Commission, who's had his hand up.
Yes.
We're talking about cemetery, and I'd like him to weigh in on it, because-
And to be clear, I would not like to take away lands from town cemetery uses.
Just, I gotta have Cemetery speak for a second. They are the department being talked about.
Jonathan Bardwell, Main Street Cemetery Commissioner. For one thing, that plot of land that Ms. Berry's talking about, I believe already has people placed on it. One thing, the town does not own the places where the bodies are placed. The people buy those plots and they own them. That's one thing in town that you don't get taxed on. The land, the road and stuff that goes around is town-owned. One other thing, March Kowalski is not a citizen of town anymore. She lives in California.
Hmm, okay. I, over here, you had your hand up.
My name is Jane Yolan Stempel. And I've spoken about this before, but I want to say two things. First of all, I don't really know the woman who owns the property. I do know the restaurant on the property. If you have never visited it, it's the best restaurant in the North Hampton Amherst area. That's why, that's why I have been supportive of this. But more than that, I want to ask how many of you actually own-
Jane, 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 just face the front, that, everybody-
I'm, I'm interested in them, not you right now.
But Jane, the process of our town meeting is so that no one is intimidated. Everyone, everyone faces forward.
This is what I want to ask everyone. How many of you actually own property in Hatfield?
Jane, Jane, we're not taking votes on that, I'm sorry.
I'm not voting, I'm not asking for a vote.
We're talking about Article 30.
I'm asking for the people who own property, how they would feel-
But you're taking a vote, and I will not-
If the town did not only take property from someone, but made it so hard for her to bring her, her, her problem to the, to the town.
I understand that, but we are not-
To be able to have her people talk about it, to be shouted down. I think that's appalling, and I think that the people in the town need to think about how they would feel if they had been treated that way. I have-
So Jane, when, if, the process we have always done for hundreds of years is you face the front and you talk, because, and I'll tell you why. I've had some really good people over the years-
This is the town.
Wait, excuse, I've had people that are great-
This is the town.
Let me finish, let me finish. I've had people that are great orators. They turn, and it can be very intimidating to people to respond. Everybody has the same, some people have a lot of confidence and some don't. Some people, it's frightening to come to the microphone. Some people, it's not. So everybody is treated the same way, with the same respect. So when you do address the town, you just talk up to here, they'll hear you, I promise you. I don't mean to be rude, I do not.
No, but I could come up there and talk this way. You see, you are making a distinction-
Okay.
Between the people who are here voting, sitting here, listening to you. We all honor the work you've done. I've done work for the town too.
Yeah.
But I would not think about saying some of the things that this woman has been listening to for the last couple of years. It's terrible.
I understand that, but we are on Article 30, and I think what Jonathan Bardwell's point was trying to make is, the land you speak of, there's bodies buried there.
There's what?
There's bodies buried there. Okay? That cemetery is, is reasonably filled up in the front. When people buy a piece of property for a burial, the town no longer owns it, they do.
I'm not talking about the burial site, I'm talking about what you've done on her site.
I, I'm talking on, on this article and the point that Jonathan made as Cemetery Commissioner. There are people buried where it's talked about going in here. It, it, it's, it's foolhardy to go into the discussion.
I know, it's, it's a difficult question. I'm talking about how people in the town should be treated, and not their property taken from them, and not their, not being let speak at, at, at times and being shouted down. That's what worries me. That's what worries me. This is a democracy.
It is.
We're all part of this democracy. So please, you know, when you're talking to the people, you can talk to them. My back is turned to them.
I understand.
I don't like that.
And I'm trying to keep the playing field leveled. That's why we've been doing this for hundreds of years. Sir, you have a comment.
Tell Joe, the young lady up-
Wait, somebody else has a comment, he's coming up.
In, in the plaid, been looking to talk. Joe, she's been trying to talk, in the plaid.
Oh, okay. How about if-
And Luke.
You were here first, you wanna come up? You, my apologies.
Quick question. Gillian Williams, Depot Road. This is more clarification, the-
The current, as of right now, the current placement of this station is not on the restaurant property. It's next to it. Is that correct?
It's between two properties.
Okay. So it's, yeah, it's not, is it, is it on, it's not actually on the restaurant property currently? Or it's straddling both lands?
I don't know if it straddles. Michael?
Where's the engineer, Michael?
We're going to have the engineer just to answer it for you.
So it's exactly...
So, you're right.
Thank you.
As soon as he answers this, I'll have you come up.
The current location for the pump station or lift station, it's all entirely on the Ruthier property. The only thing that is on the restaurant property is a temporary easement for construction purposes and a permanent easement for access to maintain the pump, or lift station.
Okay. Thank you. Now you had a question.
Well, that's good information.
My name is Lesel Barge. I live at 55 Elm Street, Hatfield. We've been kicking this can down the road for quite a while, all right? Now, you've got two businesses. You want to put them out of business? Fine. I don't agree with you, though. All right? There's got to be other alternatives in this situation. I mean, take a good look. Don't look at the nine-inch screen. Look at it semographically. You have two businesses, the people are working hard at it. Face reality. Thank you.
Thank you. This woman in the yellow was coming up. Okay, but, but he's not a registered voter, so, no, he's not a registered voter. Look, we can't be here all night long on three items, and I don't mean to be rude, but is there anybody else with a question as to this situation? Go ahead.
Angelica Dewey, 89 Elm Street. I have a question about the structure and exhaust pipe at the corner of Maple Street, Prospect Street, and Elm. There's a small brick structure with a very large exhaust pipe coming out of the ground at that location of Maple and Prospect and Elm. I want to know if, what is that structure and what are the smells that are continually emitted from the exhaust pipe? Continually, in winter, spring, summer, and fall? I'd like to know what is the nature of that structure? Is that a pump, lift station?
May I answer that?
Please.
Since I live right next door to it, and I don't have any of the issues that you're referring to as far as odors of all four seasons.
Can you talk louder, Brian?
It is a lift house.
Louder.
It is a pump house, an older pump house, a larger pump house than is proposed, and I live about 100 yards from it, and I do not have any issues with it. And to, well, I was going to read, that's all, unless you had another question.
Well, I have walked past it all year round, and I don't want to even get close to it. It does emit, it also emits heated air, a heated temperature, a wetness. It's very unattractive. I've gone by foot. Now, maybe perhaps if you're in your home, you don't have a problem with it, and I'm very glad about that. You have a beautiful property. The river there may have wind currents that take it slightly away from your home, but if you are walking on foot, and of course, that's a lovely place to walk, and the junction of the three streets, it is absolutely not to be ignored, and it's unpleasant, and it doesn't feel healthy. There's this distinct chemical smell, and, and the heaviness and wetness of the air is apparent also, always steam coming out. So it is not something that is just not apparent, if you're even somewhat close to it. And I don't know where would, in this proposed station, there must be an exhaust system in that, and where is that? I understand about the bollards being around, the things that may be, most of it's sub-ground, but the exhaust pipe cannot be sub-ground. So where is that?
Okay, Luke?
So I just, I feel that I have to respond, though, in all fairness. So, yes, I'm in the house a lot, but I live there 365 days, so I'm out of the home a lot, and I do not smell the same odors that you're, that I guess you do. And we also walk, my wife and I. So I, and I'm not, I'm not refuting what you say, but I interpret being in that area a whole lot differently. Lived there for 22 years, never had an issue. And I can't, I can't speak to the mechanics of it, the engineer could, but I would imagine that, yes, there's ventilation and there's fans that are doing whatever is the mechanical side of things. And we're also talking about a state-of-the-art, 25-feet-underground, brand-new system that's nowhere near the size of this building, and we have nine others throughout the community. So this isn't a new project in town.
Okay, first of all, as far as the new construction and developments in it, still, and what you said, you have not, I mean, we need to have the engineer speak about the exhaust pipe, I think. It is pointed away from your home, and your home is a great deal farther away from that pump station than the restaurant or Ruthier's is from the proposed one. And if one is walking in the area, and that is a lovely, the bridge there is over the river on West Street, and there's, you know, scenic walks to be taken, people who might visit the cemetery, they might very well be much closer to that station than your home is. So I, again, I can't say, your home is what, two, it's at least 300 feet from the pumping station.
I would agree with that.
Right. And, and the restaurant is a mere, I mean, 25 feet or something around there. So it's, it is a big difference. And again, we haven't had the question of the exhaust pipe answered. I'd like to know where that would be coming out of the ground, the size of it, and is it emitting constantly? And what is, as far as the, as far as the actual content of the emissions, we think that's beyond the scope of this meeting.
Luke?
Oh, you dropped something.
You dropped something there.
I just want to add that, I don't know if you were here earlier, but the engineer did speak to the charcoal filters and odor mitigation that will happen at the new pump station, lift station.
I'm Luke Longstreet, Pantry Road. I also operate a sugar house that is on West Street, so directly affected by this. I also sit on the Conservation Commission as well. Terms, as far as the claims to being close to the river, it's already, this project is cleared, Conservation Commission, it's been filed with a DEP number who has purview far above the town. So that really is not of any sort of concern. Also on top of that, the construction has already taken place, and we've also now, I believe, voted down Article 29. So the claims that there's another spot to put this is also kind of null and void because we don't, we're not going to appropriate that money to be able to put it in front of the cemetery. We've already said no to that. So I'm, I guess, kind of confused because Article 30, 31, and 32 are kind of redundant at this point because there's no money to move this pump station anywhere else. And there's also been numerous other meetings that I've attended, other people have attended, where we have discussed the design of this. The townspeople have already voted to put this project into place and to continue the sewer line. And there's a lot of other businesses, other than these two, that are relying on this. It is important to the development of Route 5, and it's important to the development of the town because we need the tax revenue that's going to come from this. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a long way to go tonight. We have two more of these to talk about. I'm going to move the question. This is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 30 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm going to call it a nay because of what I get from here. So the motion fails. Now we're going to go to ask your permission to take up Article 31, which is by the petitioner. And do we have a, okay, you can read, you can, you can come up and read Article 31. I'll get you first.
My point of view is I want to table Articles 31 and 32.
Okay.
Sorry.
So we have a motion and a second to table Articles 31 and 32, which is no discussion. Is that true? Or what? No, wait. Let's get a clarification.
What does he mean by table? Is he seeking indefinite postponement, or is he going to take it up later?
Okay, so Town Council's asking, when you say table it, are you looking to take it up later or definitely?
Indefinitely postponed.
Indefinitely postponed. Does that work? Let him clarify.
I'm Tom Mullin. I'm the Town Council. We are currently going to Article 31. There can be a motion for indefinite postponement under Article 31, or there could be a main motion by Ms. Berry under Article 31. Meeting could take up either. We can't deal with both 31 and 32 at the same time.
All right, I'll make a motion to table Article 31.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Would you mind if we, if we used the term indefinite postponement rather than table?
I'm going to make a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 31.
Okay. So the motion's been made to indefinitely postpone Article 31. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article 31 is post, is, the motion carries. So now we're up to Article 32.
Is that a majority vote?
Yes.
That would be majority.
I'm going to make a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 32. Second.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 32. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion is indefinitely postponed. Okay, so now we're up to 33.
Well, we got to go back.
No, we've got to go backwards.
Oh, we got to go back. Okay.
Number 14, I think. 14.
Yep, you're right. 14 now.
Yes. Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Einl.
I move we take up Article 14.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 14 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Einl.
I move the town vote to amend the motion passed under Article 22 of the 2021 Annual Town Meeting warrant, authorizing the taking of permanent and temporary easements on 34 West Street, among other places, in support of the Route 5 water and sewer improvements projects by eliminating the requirement of landscaping 34 West Street if and to the extent requested by the owner of such property.
Second.
You've heard the motion made and seconded under Article 14. Is there any discussion?
Bob Wagner, Lynnseed Road. I want to make sure I understand this. If we vote in favor of this, it requires two-thirds vote, we're essentially taking away something that we passed last year, which would be to put some landscaping around this pump station that we've been talking about for an hour and a half. Is that correct?
No, go back.
That's the owner's request.
Okay. So regardless of how anyone felt about this, the last three or four articles, we've been talking, and it's been said a number of times, I think even by Luke just recently, that putting in the new sewer line is hopefully going to help out the businesses and the residents that live on West Street and attract more businesses to West Street. Is this how we attract more businesses to West Street? By basically, you know, saying, okay, well, we said we'd do a little bit of landscaping to make something that you don't want there in the first place maybe look a little more attractive? I mean, the Daily Hampshire Gazette is going to run an article on this, on this town meeting. People are going to look at this YouTube, on the YouTube. If you're a business owner who then isn't allowed to even come down and talk about a matter affecting your property, even though you're a taxpayer, I don't know why anybody would want to come and set up a business in Hatfield if this is the way we're going to treat businesses. So at a minimum, let's throw this poor woman a bone and put up a couple larvaitis.
May I?
Go ahead.
Bob, 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 we're doing this because the owner of 34 West Street asked us to have this motion. We didn't, we're not doing it to be difficult, if you will.
That's a good additional information to have. I don't know why they would do that. I mean, last year, I stood up, if you remembered, and said if somebody, a private individual, came before the planning board...
I do.
And put up something like this, we would probably require some screening. Seems to me that makes sense. If that's what Ms. Berry wants, then, okay.
That's exact, that's exactly what it is. By eliminating a requirement of landscaping and to the extent requested by the owner of the property.
And Bob, Town Council would like to weigh in on this.
Let me explain the background of this. Last year, when Town Meeting authorized the taking of easements on Ms. Berry's property, there was an amendment made by Mr. Cahill that said, quote, "Provided the easement is redesigned to mitigate the easement's impact on the property by (a) moving it as far south as possible, (b) narrow it as much as possible, (c) not include a fence, and (d) landscape it so it's practically invisible," end quote. So that passed. That's part of the order that the Board of Selectmen was given by Town Meeting. And they, the Town, the Selectmen did comply with that by moving, as you've heard, all the structures off Ms. Berry's property to the south, and they eliminated the fence, and they arranged for landscaping to be constructed. At that point, we learned from Ms. Berry's counsel that she did not want landscaping on her property. So, but it's not enough for her to say so. We need Town Meeting to take this condition away because right now it's binding on the Selectmen. So the key part of this article is, it's operative only if Ms. Berry requests that we not have landscaping. It's for her benefit, not the town's.
Okay, so as Emily, as Emily Litella used to say, never mind.
Okay.
Well, you know, I'm glad you asked because there might have been other people thinking the same thing. So thank you, Turney Mullin, for clarifying.
Okay, go ahead.
The reason behind all of that was because if I was to plow, you people have, want to come in with your trucks, do maintenance, pull this structure out onto my property to do maintenance, and then in the wintertime, I didn't need to have any landscaping in the way because already it's going to be, you know, an inconvenience for them to do the maintenance with the thing.
Okay.
It's number...
So you, so you're saying you would rather not have landscaping?
No, nothing there.
Okay, okay. So now we're back to Article 14.
It's the worst, you know, best of the worst, I guess you could say.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Article 14 carries.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moriarty.
I move that we take up Article 15.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 15 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to rescind the motion passed under Article 12 of the 2000 Annual Town Meeting as follows. The town of Hatfield herein makes the following proclamation, recognizing the Sunday before December 24th, from this time forward, to be known as the formal day of the Hatfield Community Luminarium. This townwide celebration of community unity is an invitation to every citizen and household in Hatfield to join in the traditional lighting of candles around their homes and along town roadways. The Board of Selectmen shall oversee any expenditures of any town funds allocated for these purposes in a coordinated effort with other town organizations, associations, clubs, other groups, and individuals to promote, organize, and sponsor activities related to this event.
Second.
You've heard the motion and article, and the motion of Article 15 made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I guess, my question is, yeah, I understand that we now do it on Saturday, but couldn't we just change the wording of the proclamation? Modify that? Or say Saturday, or another day before December 24th? Why wouldn't that work? Why did we, I guess what I'm getting at is, why do you rescind the whole thing? And if I might, just a little history. The reason this was done was when Bootsy Prue started this. The reason this was done was when Bootsy Prouse started this in 1980. The Historic Commission, sorry, Historical Society, carried it up till about the year 2000. And then the feeling was that it might get abandoned. So are we going to stop doing the luminaryum? I don't know. Just a question.
Sure. No, there's no intention to stop doing luminaryum. The intention is just to make, because this isn't a town event to the scope it used to be in terms of the Select Board controlling it. And so to make it silent so that the people who are organizing it now have the ability to have it on Saturday. As you know, Chris, there's been fireworks the last two years, I think. I think the intention is to move forward with that. That would give you a cancellation night. If for some reason, weather-related, they had to be canceled on Saturday, it could be held on Sunday. So I don't know if Bobby wants to speak to it as well, but it's really just to allow that flexibility so that we can make sure that this event carries forward and is brought back to really the heyday it used to be. It had waned a little bit, but I think we're all committed to making sure that it stays the most beautiful special night in Hatfield of the year.
Martha? I'm just trying to keep us moving along here, because we're at 8:30, and we still didn't even get close to the budget.
Martha is 51 Elm Street. I guess my question, and I actually approached a couple of you, was the reason it was changed from Sunday to Saturday only because of the celebration? And then you're keeping it that way? Because for how many years we had it on a Sunday night? It was affiliated with events in the church. And it was kind of, I felt that was the Hatfield Luminary. And people came to celebrate townwide, the Hatfield Luminary. You'd be in the church, you'd have the Santa Claus, and so on and so forth. So I was a little bit distressed when it got moved to Saturday permanently. You know, when you said it was part of the 350th celebration, the fireworks, and so on and so forth. So it's kind of shifted its meaning, is what I'm trying to say. And that's very disappointing to me, as a person who's lived here for 44 years. I don't know if I'm the only person that feels this way. I understand that Saturday night's a better night for a lot of people, but it kind of shifted the meaning of the luminary for me. And that's why I was disappointed to see it moved to Saturday night, but...
I just want to, just to address that. I think that the intention is to keep it as traditional as possible. So not do away with any of those things you mentioned that we all love.
But they kind of have. Although it could be COVID-related too, because this kind of coincided. So whatever happened as far as some of the traditional things that happened at the luminary, regarding the church events, other things that happened, I think the timeframe was when COVID came also, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I think for the last couple of years, we did our best to have the event. You know, like you say, in terms of COVID, there had to be some changes. We, you know, hopefully, we won't have to go through that again. But I do think that the intent is to have those, all of those things back just on Saturday night.
So in other words, this is going to be a permanent thing on Saturday night from now on?
We're going to, the town would be silent on it so that there would be flexibility if for some reason there needed to be a pivot.
You're going to have it, rather than saying the Sunday before, it's going to be now the Saturday before.
Right, right, exactly.
And you're voting on it tonight, so that's the...
Well, and this is one of those examples where everything is by the letter of the law with the state. In their prior discussions and votes in prior years, we were boxed in. I think this gives them a little bit of flexibility for everybody.
Okay.
That's all. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zainal.
I move we take up Article 16.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 16 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zainal.
I move the town vote to reduce the membership of the Conservation Commission from seven to five pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 8(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws.
You've heard Article 16 and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 17.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 17 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $12,290,000 for the wastewater plant upgrades and improvement project. And that to raise the appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, provided that no bonds or notes shall be issued unless the town hall, the town shall have voted at an election to exempt the amounts required to pay such bonds or notes from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, and to authorize the Select Board to apply for state and/or federal grants in the aid of the said project, and to expend the proceeds thereof without further appropriation.
You heard the motion in Article 17. Any discussion? All those in favor signify, oh, there's a question. Go ahead.
Bill Belden, Pantry Road. My question is, is for those of us that are not on the sewer system, with these upgrades now, are, when we have our septic system pumped, are we going to be able to have it shipped to the Hatfield plant? And the reason I ask this, I've talked to a vendor last year. He said it's more and more difficult to find a place to take it when they pump somebody's system. And we're not allowed to take it to Hatfield, yet we, you know, we're helping to pay for the system, and we can't use it. And so I would like to know whether these upgrades are going to allow us, people that have septic systems, to have it shipped over there.
You guys got a comment?
Dave Prickett is back there.
And is Dave a registered voter?
No, he's already one of our engineers.
Okay. So Dave is not a registered voter, but he's our engineer that runs the pollution plant, so I think he has to be able to address...
He can introduce himself.
Yeah, don't get scared, Dave, it's okay.
Scare him.
Dave Prickett, DPC Engineering. Just wanted to make sure it was okay that I talked before I came up, so thank you. This project will not change the ability of the plant. So the plant does not currently receive septage. It will not receive septage after the upgrades. The Hatfield plant's very small. It just doesn't have the capacity to handle that. I do understand the challenges with waste management with septage in the region, but it just doesn't make sense in Hatfield. The main drivers for the project, again, just to reiterate, are modernization of a 45-year-old facility and permit compliance. So those are the two drivers.
Okay, thank you.
You stick around.
Any other discussion? There's one in the back over there, and then I'll take you over there. And again, if you're a non-registered voter, you've got to be sitting up on the sides.
Mark Gilott, 70 Elm Street. I just wanted to ask, is this, is this motion, is this article setting up the referendum or a 2 1/2 override at the town election? Is that, are we voting to approve a 2 1/2 override at the next election?
Yes, yeah, thank you. And in the back, did you have a question?
Mike Sullivan, Lindsay Road. And I understand that we're not probably wanting to get into a system where we're taking in waste from other locations, from vendors. But if you live in town and you've paid to upgrade the system, why can we not, as residents, be able to drop there? It's not like there's thousands of, that are on this, out of a septic system. I'm guessing it's probably 400 or 500, but I may be off with the number, because I have no way to know. But it seems like a relatively small number. The last time I had it done, they ended up hauling it to Brattleboro, Vermont, so it doesn't seem too environmentally conscious. I do realize that the stuff does do some damage to the, I believe it's the pumping systems and some of the valving. But it's, if we're going to pay for it, we should see some benefit, I hope.
Okay, Michael?
Mike Cahill, North Street. Could you guys, or have Dave, talk about the potential for a grant or some sort of USDA subsidization of this project? And what we're kind of anticipating might be the real cost to the town?
Okay, Dave, are you still there?
Yeah, he's right there.
There you go.
Dave, could you just make sure that you're speaking right into the mic so everybody can hear?
Sure.
I don't know if it raises.
Again, usually never criticized for not having a loud voice. You know, this project goes back to an appropriation a few years ago where the residents endorsed the community, putting together a wastewater management plan, basically a master plan for the next 20 years. So once we came up with the recommended plan, Marlene and Phil directed us to go seek grant and low-interest loan opportunities for the community. We're working closely, Hatfield is, with USDA Rural Development. USDA has expressed preliminary commitment, if you will, of an expectation of a grant of approximately 20% and a 40-year low-interest loan at what they term as a poverty interest rate, which I believe is currently at about 1.5%. So it's not only a, about the only grant opportunity for a project like this that still exists, especially for small communities, but the loan terms are pretty advantageous. So USDA has a prerequisite that the community has to appropriate the funds prior to receiving a formal commitment. So that is the ask or the request of the residents this evening is to take step one, to appropriate the project fund so that we can finalize the grant and loan terms.
Can you just repeat what the percentage would be, or the dollar figure? You said about 20%, right?
Sure, well, put a bullseye on me. We hope that the grant is in the neighborhood of 20%. And again, that's based on Hatfield's size, your median household income, population, conditions, underwriting criteria across the board. The loan, again, would be, the expectation would be in the poverty interest rate, the lowest interest rate USDA offers. So those are, those are pretty good terms in our world. The days are long gone of 90 cents on the dollar grant, you know, from 1970s.
So the grant is about $2 million?
Yep.
That's what I wanted the people to hear.
Yeah. We wish it was more, but that's just...
Yes, we do, but, you know.
Okay, so I think we can move this. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
And now this will appear on the ballot next week. So if you're in support of this project, you would want to vote yes on the ballot. If you're opposed to it, you would vote no on the ballot. That's at town elections, which is Tuesday, a week from tonight, today.
Okay, Brian?
Where are we? Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 18.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 18.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a five-year vehicle lease beginning July 1st, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded on Article 18. Is there any discussion? Michael?
So are these replacement vehicles, number one? And number two, what vehicles are they? And number three, what's the total cost of this to the town over five years?
Bill?
Sean's looking up the numbers. I believe the three vehicles are...
Darrell, louder.
It's a five-year lease. It's three vehicles we're buying. It's a COA van, which is approximately $70,000 to $80,000. It's a pickup truck for the DPW replaces director. And it's a pickup truck for the fire department. They're replacing vehicles that we are, that are currently need to be. Go ahead, Sean.
I was just going to say, I really want to stress that this is not actually a lease in the traditional way that you think about a lease. We own the vehicles. This is, this is a loan, essentially, is what it is. We are taking out a loan to buy vehicles, which we will then own at the end of the term of the loan. So it is not a lease like you, like you would lease a car or a truck or whatever. It's really a rent-to-own, or lease-to-own, or whatever.
Michael, 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 if you want to get to the mic.
Do we have a five-year cost? Do we take what's in the budget this year for these three vehicles and multiply times five? That's really the total cost that you're asking us to approve tonight.
Yeah, it's $50,000.
Yeah, yeah.
$50,000 a year for five years.
Okay, so three vehicles, $250,000. It's the total cost for us.
Right, and most of these vehicles will be ordered in July, and I believe we won't, probably some of them, we won't get for almost a year. We won't see these until next year.
Okay. And all those in favor...
Sorry, I just want to say, we are, we're paying off this year in a little bit here, hopefully, a current lease. So that will, we're, it will require some additional funding, but we are paying off a lease that we're currently paying. So we'll be able to reduce that amount. That will not, yeah, that will not be in the budget every year.
Okay, all those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zainal.
I move we take up Article 19.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 19 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zainal.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $31,450 to pay the balance of the current vehicle lease and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
Motion's been read and seconded under Article 19. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 20.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 20 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator. For the purpose of purchasing a new police cruiser and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
Motion's been read and seconded under Article 20. Is there any discussion? Michael?
Why don't we lease to buy or borrow to purchase this vehicle as well?
We made the decision to do that to keep the lease payments at the same level that we have been paying, so we don't have to build a hole in a future budget with that piece.
Okay.
And we had the free cash to do it.
All those...
20.
Go ahead.
Matt Chandler, Prospect Street. How many police cruisers do we currently have?
Say your name again.
Matt Chandler, Prospect Street.
How many cruisers do we have? Chief?
Three. So this would be a fourth cruiser?
Replacement.
Replacement, thank you.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 21.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 21 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $71,768 for radio communications equipment for the fire department, and to meet said appropriation from free cash and to auth, excuse me, and to authorize the Select Board to accept and spend without further appropriation any grants for the purpose.
You've heard the motion made and read and seconded under Article 21. Is there any discussion?
Could I make a comment?
Oh, sure you can.
So earlier, one of the articles, we rescinded a $255,000 town meeting vote for the equipment, the same equipment we just voted for, for $71,000. And the difference in that price of approximately $180,000 is because the fire chief got a grant. Right, Bob? So, so that's why one was rescinded for $255,000. We really only need 71, because... We really only need 71 because the chief was able to work to secure $180,000 grant. I thought you should get recognition for that.
Yeah, pretty nice. Good job. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 22.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 22 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $15,000 for personal protective equipment for the fire department and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
You've heard the motion read and seconded under Article 22. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 23.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 23 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $80,000 for a new trash compactor at the transfer station and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
Motion's been read and seconded under Article 23. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 24.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 24 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, and I have to make one correction. The motion is going to be a tad bit different from the article when it was put out a couple weeks ago, is they just have to clarify the streets involved in this.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 for drainage repairs on Raymond Avenue, School Street, and Chestnut Street, and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Any discussion? Michael?
Phil, are we going to do that in-house or are we going to have to outsource this? This is in-house?
It's in-house.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 25.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 25 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $26,000 for the removal of trees and installation of a fence on Elm Court and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
Motion's been read and seconded under Article 25. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 26.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 26 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $94,500 for storage building on Elm Court and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
You've heard the motion read under Article 26. Is there any discussion? Go ahead. I'll get you in a minute, Jimmy. No, go ahead.
What kind of a storage shed are you going to build for $100,000 on Elm Court? And my second question is, what's the deal with this bicycle path?
Okay, the bicycle path's not on the warrant. We're not talking about that, but we can answer the question about the storage building.
There will be more information on that coming.
I tried.
But in terms of the shed, Phil, did you want to speak to the scope of that?
Sure. So, we're building a 54 by 90 approximately storage shed for materials, and we're going to store some winter sand down there in salt as well, so we can utilize that property. We want to start utilizing that property so the trucks that are running on that side of town don't have to come all the way to Streets Road for loading.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Let's try that again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr., I'm going to say Brian, okay?
Yeah, that's okay. We're on a first-name basis here.
There you go.
Joe.
Yes.
I move we take up Article 27.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 27.
Second.
Mr. Moderator.
Brian.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $350,000 for the purpose of purchasing a mini pumper for the fire department and to raise this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, to borrow under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority.
You've heard the motion read and seconded under Article 27. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. We're making good time here.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town, I move we take up Article 28.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 28 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of purchasing Chromebooks for the school department and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second.
You've heard the motion read under Article 28. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay, we're going to 33 now, Joe.
Yeah, we go to 33 now.
Yeah, now, we got to move up to 33.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr., Brian.
I move we take up Article 33.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 33 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Brian.
I move the town, I move the town vote to amend action taken at the 2021 annual town meeting to appropriate a reserve from the Community Preservation Annual Revenues or Available Funds in the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee, for the committee administration expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2022, with each item to be considered on a separate appropriation. Appropriations to leave unchanged committee administrative expenses at $8,250. Reserves to change historic resources reserve from $28,800 to $37,440. To change community housing reserve from $28,800 to $37,440. To change open space reserve from $28,800 to $37,440. And to change budgeted reserve from $193,350 to $253,825.
You've heard the motions read in Article 33. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 34.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 34 in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Annual Revenues or Available Funds in the following amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2023, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriations from FY 2023 estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $8,250. Reserves from FY 2023 estimated revenues for historic resources reserve, $32,400. From FY 2023 estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $32,400. For FY 2023 estimated revenues for open space reserve, $32,400. From FY 2023 estimated revenues for budgeted reserve, $218,550.
Second.
You've heard the motions read under Article 34. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 35.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 35 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve account the sum of $11,000 to support the inventory management and preservation project to preserve, rehabilitate, and restore the Hatfield Historical Museum collection under the direction of the Hatfield Historical Society. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
You've heard the motions read under Article 35. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 36.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 36 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve account the sum of $10,000 to contribute to the costs to create baseball field dugouts at Smith Academy, 34 School Street, under the direction of the Hatfield School Committee. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
You've heard the motion read under Article 36. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 37.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 37 is in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve account the sum of $30,000 to contribute to the costs to create recreational walking paths at Smith Academy, 34 School Street, under the direction of the Hatfield School Committee. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
You've heard the motion read under Article 37. Is there any discussion? Michael?
Yes.
Could you, could you talk about the nature of these paths, specs, basically, and more or less where they're going to be located?
I, I don't know if there's anyone else here who can speak to it. I know, Bob, go ahead.
Sure.
Oh, Allison is here, sorry.
Bob Wagner, 221 Lindsay Road. I'm the chair of the Community Preservation Committee. No, they're not blacktop, Mike. The first phase of this project is to create a walking path in the parking lot that will go out towards the Baseball Diamond and access the Smith Academy Field Hockey Field. Actually, I attended the field hockey dedication ceremony with Diana and others, and there's quite a few folks that attend these events who are not in a position to easily walk that great a distance. And so, this is an opportunity to make that happen. But then also, Phases Two and ultimately, I think, Three and Four will create a, a walking path that will go around the perimeter of the property, accessing the pond and that area with, and I think, Michael, if I'm correct, the hope is, is that perhaps an Eagle Scout project or something like that will put in those exercise stations along the way, and then also maybe benches by the pond. Those are for subsequent phases of this project. But it does create another sort of trail loop, if you will, to connect with the, the loop trail that we have along our sidewalks here in town.
So, is this, is this the first of four phases?
This is Phases One and Two. And so, the Phases One and Two are $30,000 with a lot of in-kind contribution from the Department of Public Works.
Okay, we're making good time here. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. I have to say, Bob, this sounds like SimCity. You're adding things to our community. Thank you. Yes. Yep.
Jimmy Tarr, 59, Prospect Street. I'd like to make a motion that we table, table, not put off forever, Article 38 until we can investigate the chances of buying a pre-existing maintenance-free structure on the open marketplace for way less than $234,000 for the pavilion.
Hold on, I, I, Bob, can you clarify? Was there more money from before on that, or is this 234? I'm just asking for clarification. Because I think in prior years, we had a vote, too, right?
Right.
He's making a motion to table.
Yes, okay. My apology, my apology.
So, we can look into it.
Okay, is there a second?
Alternative cost.
Is there a second on his motion?
Sir.
Okay. Any discussion or not? Okay. Sure, go ahead.
If I understand correctly, the motion, which is to table, is intended to postpone consideration of this article till some future time.
Correct.
Such a motion can only be made at a town meeting with respect to that meeting itself. So, if you want to come back to this before we go home tonight or at some adjourned night, other night, like next, like tomorrow, that's fine. That's your motion. But if what you mean is you want it on a future warrant, you can't do that. No town meeting can dictate what's going to be on the warrant of a future town meeting.
And I cannot table this till, till the future.
You cannot. Well, you can, you can table it to a future date within this meeting, meaning we don't finish tonight.
But, but wait, the reality is, is they can just re-enter it at another town meeting as a new article.
Yeah, that's why.
So, what you're doing is fine, and they can bring it up at a new article as what you're saying.
That, what I'm saying is that you really want to make a motion for indefinite postponement.
Okay, I would like to change my motion to an indefinite postponement until we can further investigate alternative cost to this project.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Bob. No, no, there's no, there's done. Right, there's no further discussion, or is there?
Oh, there is.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure.
I would urge folks to vote nay on this motion for one reason and one reason only. The cost of the pavilion, we can debate that, hopefully not as long as we did the project on West Street. But if we vote money today, tonight, we can do the kind of investigation that Jimmy is suggesting and have money set aside for this project. If we don't spend all of that money, we can always put it back into the CPA fund. If we vote on the motion that's just been passed, we're not doing anything towards the pavilion, in all likelihood, until at least next fiscal year, May of Town Meeting 2023. If the sewer project seemed like a long time, this one is getting even longer. I believe the first project grant for this project was in 2013. So, I would encourage us to move forward. And if I may, and to a point Michael made last year, in November of 2020, the state gave us $169,578 in state matching funds. Last May Town Meeting, I think in large part because of the pandemic, we only had one grant proposal before us for $9,800, leaving a sizable amount of that, just the money that we got from the state left in our kitty. This past November, we got $179,395 from the state, 100% match. Those two numbers together is $348,973. Take out the $9,800 for the Town Clerks Project, we've got $339 and $111 left just from state matching funds. We can fund everything that's on tonight's warrant and still have $54,111 left in balance from state funds and do all of these projects without spending a dime of our own money of CPA funding, based on what we've gotten from the state. I would urge you not to vote for this motion. We can debate the number of, and how much the pavilion costs, but if we've got the money for the pavilion, we can move forward investigating other alternatives, and we've got the cash in hand. other alternatives, and we've got the cash in hand. As Lori knows, if the project doesn't spend everything that we allocated for it, the money just goes back to the CPA fund from which it came. We don't lose it, and we still earn interest on it. Thank you.
Somebody over there.
And I think Luke and somebody over there. And Luke?
My point was strictly the fact that the $235,000 is way more than we could buy something to put in that place, way less time, maintenance-free.
Okay. There was somebody, Mickey?
I think Luke is waiting.
Who?
Luke is missing.
Okay.
Thank you, moderator.
I'll get you next. Luke, I'll get you next.
With respect to everybody who has opinions on this for the last, I don't know, seven or eight years, I liken this to a house. We've appropriated 12, I'm sorry, $12 million to a sewer plant. That's the base of your house. We have the entry to our house, which you could liken to a portico or a porch. The monies are in the fund. I can't even more eloquently state what he just said. The funds are there. It's not at a cost to the taxpayers. And I would also say that this is the gateway to Hatfield. We all walk around that block. We all have community events at that block. The senior citizens recreated that block, and it is the community center. And I would appeal to the citizens of this town to appropriate these funds to properly put the porch on the house.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? I'll get you in a second. If you want to start up, you can certainly.
Is it?
Damon Street.
I'm sorry, Christopher Smith, Prospect Street. At the April 26 Selectments Meeting, didn't Richard Abbott say this was going to cost $356, this pavilion?
Yeah, we have $90,000 already allocated to it. We then add to that to bring it up to the cost, the current estimate.
There was a prior town meeting where there was $90,000 something set aside.
All right, all right. So Mickey, just to kind of say, I'm sorry, you talked about a house. You're buying a house.
Okay, sir, come on up. Wait a minute, Mickey.
My name is Russell Powell, and I'm on Elm Street, and I'm also a member of the Community Preservation Commission. And I just want to speak up for Rich Abbott and his committee because our job is oversight, and on numerous of occasions, we've asked him to go back and crunch the numbers, put it back out to bid. He has worked very hard as a volunteer to get it this far. Nobody likes that it's this expensive, but that's what it costs. And it's certainly an aesthetic improvement over a prefab.
Okay, so we have to vote on the, on the motion to, come on up, Mark.
Mark Gillett, Elm Street. I'm on the community, excuse me, I'm on the Open Space Committee, who has kind of spearheaded this project since 2013, really, including the Smith Academy Park and all the changes that have gone on there as well. But I just want to reiterate that, that this is a quality project, and this is a quality product that we're buying now. This is not just, it has to go through all the processes of going out to bid for public bid. It's not something that we can just bring in like a backyard barbecue type of pavilion. It's something that has to really go out to bid. And the process that we kind of went through, as you might remember, we had a professional design. We had a process where we invited people to make comments on the design. We had a vote in 2020 on four different designs, and people were able to view the project and vote on their choice. I think the entire process to just, to just take that away, all those 10 years of work on this project, professional architects, professional engineers, landscape architects, all the committee work that's gone into that, and say we're going to table it and investigate something else, I really urge you to vote no on that.
Okay, so we got two steps on this. One is, we either vote to table it or not to table it.
Indefinite postponement.
Or definite postponement. So Mickey, did you want to jump up for a second? I'm trying to hurry through here without being rude.
Just to expound on Mark Gillett, a very important point, and Christopher Smith's very important point. This is apples and oranges. This isn't building a house. Things have to go to bid. It's a process. We can only take what's given to us from people that enter the bidding process. And they're not the barn builders of 1840. That would be awesome, but they're not. And we have to deal with what we're given. And I think Ed said very wisely that we can't kick the can down the road anymore, that we're at a time where we have an opportunity to build a beautiful structure that takes the place of a beautiful building that was torn down, Smith Academy, and make it be a cornerstone for all the concerts, for all the people. Yeah, I mean, places are important. Tangible, tangible structures are important to a community. So I would appeal to everybody here tonight to spend these resources very wisely in this, in this capacity and put them toward this goal. For all the hard work, before I was an Open Space Committee member, before I was a member of the Historical Commission, all these people have done so much work for the town, for this beautiful thing. And it just makes sense. So don't confuse like what a house costs, and I would tell you, it's a lot more than it was just a year ago, to what we have to spend to make this happen, just like any, any other expenditures that are here tonight. Things cost money, but we are worth it. So please vote for this.
Okay. Please hurry, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I gotta deal with, with the tabling. Okay, she's gonna wait. If we, if we vote yea, it's to table the article, oop, not to table, but to indefinitely postpone, new word now. If we vote nay, it's to go back to the article. All those in favor of the, of the postponing indefinitely signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Now we're back to the article. So now, do you want to?
We can move it. We've had the discussion.
Okay, we can move it. We've done a lot of discussion.
Never read it, did we?
We didn't read it.
Oh, we didn't.
You didn't read it.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 38.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 38, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve Account the sum of $234,000 to create a public pavilion at Smith Academy Park at the corner of School Street and Main Street under the direction of the Hatfield Open Space Committee. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
You've heard the motion read the seconded under Article 38. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to indefinitely postpone Article 39. Second.
Second.
Okay, so if it's being indefinitely postponed on Article 39, there's no second, there's a second, no debate?
Second.
You have a second, right?
Yeah.
They have a second. So it's going to be a simple majority. All those in favor of tabling signify by saying, oop.
Indefinitely postponing.
Indefinitely postponing. All those in favor.
Can I make a comment? Just so people understand what this article was. So the, the Community Preservation Act, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, was working with the town to purchase some land over on Jericho Road. And so we, we basically, the town was outbid for the property, is what this was. So there's no need to move forward in, in the appropriation of the funding to purchase the property that was for sale. So that's what this, that's what this particular article is about.
Okay, all those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 39 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 40.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 40, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town vote to set the spending limits for the revolving funds under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 as follows. Community garden, $5,000. DPW motor grader, $5,000. Hazardous materials, $20,000. Tax title, $25,000. For a total spending authorized of $55,000.
Second.
You've heard the motion in Article 40 read and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move we take up Article 41.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 41, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Jaworski.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $75,000 to the stabilization fund and to meet said appropriation from free cash.
Second. You've heard the motion read and seconded in Article 41. Is there any
After all is said and done tonight, do you guys have an estimate as to what our free cash balance will be? My point is, would there be another $25,000 to be able to put into the stabilization account? No? So what, what would our projected balance be?
Of what?
Free cash.
That we haven't spent?
Yeah. If we spend everything.
Marlene, we were, it's somewhere around $30,000. Is that correct? Sharon's, somewhere around $30,000.
Okay, so, so we could put another $25,000 into stabilization?
We could.
And why wouldn't we do that? We've, we've promised the town over years and years and years that we would try to build this account back up.
Well, well.
Why not, why not put everything we possibly can into stabilization?
Well, those are two different questions, Mike. Are you asking why we wouldn't put another $25,000, or why we wouldn't put everything we can?
If you turned around and said, well, there's no money left, then I would certainly understand that. But if there's 30 grand left.
So theoretically, we could put any amount of free cash into stabilization right now, if we didn't spend it. Or, but we've chosen, but why have we chosen to put $75,000 into stabilization is because we have, we wanted to keep that 30,000 outside of stabilization because, number one, it just rolls to free cash next year anyway, so we could use it again, or we could put it in stabilization then. But if anything unforeseen happens, we still have time to use that money. So when we came to this point, you know, we weren't, we didn't want to spend free cash down to the last penny right here and now because we planned this, you know, three weeks ago or so?
Yeah.
I mean, so that's the reason. And there's, I mean, and it's going to reappear again next year. So if we wanted to put 30,000 more in free cash next year, we could do that.
Right, okay.
It doesn't go anywhere. It just keeps circulating.
If anything unforeseen happens, we can go to the stabilization account as well as go to free cash if we needed to.
Well, no, not as easily. That's, it requires a two-thirds vote, number one, to remove money from stabilization. So, so.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 41 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion cap passes.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move we take up Article 42. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to take up Article 42, as in your handout. This is the budget, so I think we're going to make it.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moriarty.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $12,592,653 for inconsistent with separate purposes and separate line items set forth in the version of the fiscal year 2023 budget prepared by the Finance Committee and Select Board, approved April 26, 2022, and on file with the Town Clerk, and to meet said appropriations as follows. $10 million from taxation, $10,863,800, sorry, $10,863,809 from Cable TV Enterprise Fund, $65,680 from Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, $966,270, from ambulance revenue, $98,544, from school choice, $12,000, from cemetery perpetual care interest, $500, from free cash, $405,129, and from water and sewer retained earnings, $180,721.
Second.
You've heard the motion read and seconded in Article 42. Now, this is the budget. So in, in the handout that they have, we usually go to the pages where the line items are, and this one starts at number 114. When you look at this grid sheet, I leave every page open for discussion, but I'm just gonna, I go through what's.
Did we screw something?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make a statement about.
Can you put the mic closer to you?
Sorry, overall about the budget and the amount of free cash that's being used in here to fund the budget. And I want to point this out because technically, free cash isn't reoccurring revenue, although some of it is always reoccurring. But, you know, it's not without notice that we did this, and there's a couple of items in here that we funded out of free cash, one of which is a one-time bond payment piece. But there's also money for increasing the ambulance service to, so that we can have enough people to cover all the shifts that we have because we're not respond, we're not able to respond to calls because we don't have the capacity with volunteers to do that anymore. It speaks to the changing nature of the town. The reason we decided to do it out of free cash is because it's an evaluation year for that, to see how many calls we can respond to. We get revenue back when we respond to calls, and how much revenue we can get back in the process, and then what, you know, if any, what other options we might have going forward. We really don't know the answers to all those questions, and we, and we definitely don't know the answer to all the revenue that we can bring back yet. So we're aware of that situation, and it's built into the budget, and it's a problem that we'll have to face next year potentially. But it's something that we face across the town, which is that we don't have enough people working in town anymore, here, every day of the week, eight hours a day, you know, when they're at work normally, to volunteer to do all these things. We, we just don't have the bodies here to do that. So we really have to think about how we organize the town and how we fund the services and what services we want, because that's what it's coming down to. Things that used to be done by volunteers, Darrell being one of them on the ambulance, for example, are just, it's not tenable to keep using volunteers anymore. So that's where we're at, and that's what we're considering.
I mean, this is the first time that I ever remember, and I haven't been able to attend your meeting, so I'm not completely up to speed on, on, on all the rationale for the use of free cash to cover expenditures and outlays in our operating budget. I don't know if we've ever, ever done that before as a community. So, okay, maybe we have, but not to this extent. And so can you, can the Finance Committee speak to the, the outlook? Future years? I mean, we're using monies now from free cash to expend ongoing expenses, albeit there may be some income coming from what you just talked about, Sean. But how do we cover these expenses next year? Well, we don't have $1 million in free cash. So we have, we.
Darrell, put the mic closer.
We have talked about that repeatedly at our budget meetings, and it's a great question, Mike. We, we, to be clear, the $405,000 that we're using this year, I believe half of that, about $199,000 is a one-year debt payment. Is that right, Sharon? And that's because we are finally, per your request, Mike, getting to a, we're to a point where we're going out and we're, we're getting bonds for a lot of our loans and not doing one-year loans. And so the price we paid for that was, we had to have a one-time interest payment, additional interest payment of about $199,000.
interest payment of about $199,000. But to your larger question, we have been under Proposition 2 and 1/2 since about 1980, which means that our tax rate can only go up 2 and 1/2% every year. This town has done a masterful job of controlling budget, controlling expenses, and, and, and it continues to work hard. We have really great people working hard at this right now. But at some point, we're going to have to, we're, we're going to have to find some extra money. Whether that's an operating budget, operating budget override, I don't know. But that is something that we will have to take up this year because we may find out that our best option next year for the fire ambulance is to continue to try to fund the positions that, that are being proposed in this budget. We know that we have to continually keep our school, which we're in right now, we, we have to continually fund our school. If we are not super competitive in bringing in school choice students, we, we, we could be in trouble. So we need to continue to make the investment in education, in our public services, and that's really to Sean's point of what we as a town need to decide we're going to do in the future. And we have talked to the Select Board about this, and this is something that we will be talking about throughout the year and hopefully have better answers next year for you or even later on this year. And Sean, you got something?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, there, there are options, but they're not necessarily good. You know, we could decide that we don't want to have an ambulance service, and we'll rely on whatever happens next. Maybe Northampton will be able to cover all the calls. Maybe they won't. Maybe you'll have to wait for Deerfield, or as it happened in one case this year, you can wait for Highland to come from Goshen. You know, that is an option. But, you know, we could, I mean, we're, we're, we're putting forward a fairly large increase in the school budget, but the reality is that the school has lost 25% of its enrollment over the last 15 years. And you can't, I mean, you're not, and, and you're not overpaying for it, quite honestly. You're, you're not overpaying for the school. It's, you're paying almost virtually exactly penny for penny what Hadley pays. It's virtually the same. They get the same state aid, they pay the same amount. I mean, I could give you the numbers, but they're within pennies of each other, really. And, you know, you're paying less than what the big regionals pay to educate a student by a lot. So the idea of regionalizing the school, I, you could argue that it saves you money because you could bring down overall costs, but you can't argue that, I mean, just for example, Frontier Regional is paying about, what is it, $21,000 a year to educate a student? Their, their actual net school spending, you know, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, they're spending about $21,765 to educate a student, and half of your spending is less than $18,000. I don't know what, I don't know what you can do to really bring that down, and it's not a matter of you have to maintain your school choice. You have to, you have to keep attracting more school choice because your actual school age population is going down, is what's happening. So, I mean, those are some of the decisions you're going to be faced with. And how do we do that? I mean, I, I think we need to think about that. That's what we're planning on thinking about over the next, you know, three, four, five months because we can't continue to just run the, the things the same way we have done for the last 20 years. That's the, that's the bottom line.
Just one other quick, quick, you know, our, our issue, our major problem as a community is that it's income related. I mean, you guys do a great job every year with the budget, the expense budget. It's, you know, you can only get blood out of a stone so long, and then it's, you know, you're starting to look for another stone somewhere. And so our major challenge is income related. And my perspective has always been this building, this school system that, that we are in tonight, it's probably the greatest opportunity for us to use to generate income for this community.
That's right.
The more attractive we make our school system, the more students are going to want to come here, the more tuition revenue we're going to get, the more money we're going to have to make it even better. And before you know it, we're going to have a full building of students here in the elementary school, and we're going to be getting millions of dollars over and above what we get now from this school system. And I think that's the outlook that people have got to look at in this community. This is the solution. We're sitting right in it. We've just got to make it the best we can so that we get more students in this community.
Okay. So we've got to get going on the budget here, but I do agree that in, 2 and 1/2 has been around for 40 years. They've never had a budget override in, I, I am so proud of what these guys and the financial team has done to help this town out. We are so damn lucky. I don't know how much longer they can keep it up, but my God. And when we go through these pages, I can tell how very tight they are because the first line is moderator, 97.85. I mean, $97.85, like, that showed me how, how sliced tight they have this budget. So I applaud you. So, all right, I'm looking at the first page, 114 through 195. If anybody has a question, please raise your hand. And I'll just keep going, but if you look back and catch one, let me know. The next page is 210 to 292. The next page is 300 to 380. We've got 421 to 294. 510 to 699. And I think, let's see, I think those are the budget items. I mean, the rest is all of the financial information on how they got there. And, and this is where we usually go through on the budget. What's that, Lydia? So the handout you have has everything in it. Question?
I have a question.
Sure. No, no, all the pages are open. I just trying to, I have to say the, go ahead.
Lucinda Williams Stipper wrote, I'm just wondering about the tree warden. It's number 294 on some page. What can you tell me about that, please?
You've applied for it? Can somebody speak on that tree warden?
Phil, could you please speak to that?
So the tree warden budget is not a, not a salary line item, it's an expense. It's for all the town trees in town, plus it covers the grinding of the materials that everybody brings up to 10 Straits Road at no charge.
Yeah, it is. Paul Dostal, Main Street Hatfield. In 2016, the residents of Hatfield voted to legalize marijuana. To date, we have two marijuana, we have a marijuana manufacturer, and we have one marijuana grower, but yet we have, under cannabis host impact fees for FY '21, we have no revenue. Estimated receipts for FY '22, zero revenue. FY '23, estimated receipts, zero revenue. Can someone explain to the residents why we have two marijuana establishments, but we have, we're not collecting any revenue to date?
Because you haven't been buying enough pot. I had to say that. And by the way, Paul is, is just retiring off of, of the Planning Board, and he's done a great job for so many years. So thank you so much, Paul. Thank you.
It's a good question, and the, the easy answer is that these, the licensing for cannabis operations, as you know, Paul, is a huge process, takes a long time. These operations have just gotten up and running, so those payments have not come due yet.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Article 42 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move we take up Article 43.
Second.
Good job, Paul. Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded to take up Article 43, as in your handout.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Zinal.
I move the town vote to hear any and all reports which have to do with the welfare of the town.
This is checking, second.
The motion's been made and seconded in Article 43.
Bobby Vessel, Pantry Road. Just wanted to let townspeople know the Memorial Day Parade will be back on as it has been in the past this year. It will be on Sunday, May 29, kicking off at 12:30. And this year, it will actually be commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Hatfield Legion. They had to postpone a bit with COVID, but as part of that, this year's parade will be bolstered a bit with some additional entries, including Fife and Drum and the Shriners, as well as the flyover. So we hope everyone will come out and, and take part in the parade. The normal commemorations and, and activities will take place after the parade, but 12:30 on May 29.
Okay.
Thank you, Bobby.
I just wanted to take a minute and ask for a, a moment of silence here for all those now serving in our military to return home safely, for our aging and since passed veterans that gave so much. We're all here safely today because of your commitment and your service, as well as so many that died and suffered in this pandemic. We all know someone that didn't make it. And let's never forget to thank all of our public safety members for their sacrifice and willingness to protect us. Also, please pray for those in so many conflicts around the world, and I have to say especially right now in Ukraine. This town has so much Polish background and Russian-Polish background, and they're, they're just watching so many people in, in trouble. So just take a moment and pray for everyone. Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to thank all of you for staying here this long and through this time, and it's so appreciated. Remember, voting is Tuesday, May 17. Please vote, it's so important. Thank you to John Novak and your team for the audio and visual work, and thank you for coming and for my counters. I appreciate it. Remember to turn your cellphones back on. I hereby adjourn this meeting.
Motion to dissolve.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to dissolve. Dissolve.